Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, September 20th, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus,
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith, Ms. Strasburger,
Here.
Ms. Warwick,
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lavelle Chair,
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you.
I'm here.
Six members present. Thank you, Rev. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council and per fealty is not permitted. After you are called, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belts Hoover, Brussels, Belgium. Henry VI, Part II, Act IV, Scene II, Global Intelligence Society US National Candidate for President 2024, CGSIi.rlm глобал intelligence@gmail.com, primary email. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the Law and Society Association and the Modern Language Association. Concerns of Pittsburgh City Council and local legislatures across the United States are the legal. One, laws of the land, US nation, Pennsylvania State, Pittsburgh City, Home Rule Charter, yes, Rules of Council, no. Two, laws of the city, ordinances. I have proposed in public comment over the last 10 years, 21 laws, 21 ordinances to protect and promote local. And three, legal compliance by citizens plus court conviction due to non-compliance. Is it legally possible for a citizen to sue a local district attorney, such as Stephen Zapala, due to district attorney authorized fake investigation, false arrest, fraudulent charges, to sue a local council, such as the Pittsburgh City Council collectively, due to council permitted defamation of that citizen by another citizen in her public comment, in the municipal court of common pleas, to sue a local counselor individually, such as Mr. Kraus, Ms. Gross, Mr. Burgess, for active interference in his right to freedom of speech and public comment in the Western Pennsylvania Federal District Court as a civil rights violation, to do so simultaneously for monetary damages, and to do so within overlapping national and local election cycles? The answer to that is yes. All legal. What is illegal is another question. But it would be fun. And it will be fun. And no matter what Ms. Warwick is doing over here, once again, we have a counselor who seems to prefer to be on her digital device while a citizen is speaking in public comment. I find this to be consistent with what it is that you do not do in this council. And that is to observe the civility that is required of you as a counselor. And not just you, but the rest of you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chief Pomai Chakmam Yehelihi. Currently on mute.
In Laketek Elikane, the light of me honors the light in it. My title is East Pomai Chakmam Yehelihi. I'm a Grand Council Chief Member, Medicine for the Air Park Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. Ignorance of the law is no excuse when you fail to honor your oath to the Constitution as municipal officers, public servants, citizens and non-citizens upon our Aboriginal homeland called America. The act of genocide of our people is punishable by death. The Constitution for the United States of America, Article 1, Section 2, Block 3, and Excluding Indians Not Tax, is specific to our people. And the Bouvier's Dictionary adapted to the Constitution states that Indians are the aborigines of this country are so-called. And that Indian tribe or our communities and our nations are separate and distinct community or body of the Aboriginal Indian race of men that were met here in the United States by your ancestors. And all Indian treaties entered into prior to 1871 were consummated pursuant to Article 2, Section 2 of the United States Constitution. And Article 6, commonly referred to as the Supremacy Clause, provides that this Constitution and the laws of the United States which shall be made in pursuance thereof, and all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States shall be the supreme law of land. And the judges in every state and municipality shall be bound thereby anything in the Constitution or laws of any state to the contrary notwithstanding. The Supreme Court has consistently held that our treaties have the same force and effect as treaties with foreign nations and consequently are the supreme law of the land and are binding upon state courts and state legislatures, notwithstanding state laws to the contrary. The Supreme Court, speaking through Justice, Chief Justice Marshall, stated in part as follows, "The statute was held void since it conflicted with the Cherokee Indian Treaty", which was declared to be the supreme law of the land, and that our nations have always been considered a distinct in the political communities retaining our original natural rights as the undisputed possessors of our soil from time immemorial. In the Northwest Ordinance in 1787, in Article III specifically says that the utmost good faith shall always be observed toward the Indians, and that our lands and our property shall never be taken from us without our consent. And in our property rights and liberty, they shall never be invaded or disturbed unless in just and lawful wars authorized by Congress. Last time I checked, we're not at war. But laws founded in justice and humanity shall from time to time be made for preventing wrongs being done to our people and preserving our peace and friendship with your people. Protecting our rights, the indigenous people, was very important for City Council to do in House/Congress Resolution 330, run acknowledging the contributions to the development of the United States Constitution by the Air Park Confederacy of Nations, and to reaffirm our government-to-government relationship between our people and the United States.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Chief Ajaliheb Chanel Keen.
Greetings. Can you hear me?
Yes. We can no longer hear you.
Greetings. Can you hear me?
We can now.
Greetings. In Laketek Elikane, I am an Aboriginal American matriarch, and my title is Chief Yajology Chanel Keen, located in the Delaware Territory, as you all will call Pittsburgh. My statement today is to invoke my people's constitutional indigenous rights. And what I mean by indigenous is an adjective in etymology since 1640s originating in particular, in a particular place, sprung from the land. What land? The Americas, including the islands. I am also encouraging City Council to pass my people's legislation. The legislation is intended to ensure the protection, security, and safety of my people against discrimination, forced assimilation, eugenics, and genocide. The title of the legislation is Pittsburgh City Code Municipal Title 6, Article 12, Rights of Indigenous People. My people are acknowledged in multiple maxims of law and documents such as the Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and Excluding Indians Not Tax, the Delaware Treaty, the Northwest Ordinance, the A-Drip, the U-Drip, House/Congress Resolution 331, 100th Congress, Second Session, and the list continues. Therefore, all municipal officers, citizens, all other foreigners and immigrants have a responsibility to uphold their oath to the Constitution, which has enabled them to be unappreciative guests in my people's house, known as today the Americas, including the islands. Honor your ancestral's oath to the Constitution and your own oath to the Constitution. Be the first amongst yourselves, again, to honor your oath to the Constitution. And I yield.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You will also be given three minutes to speak.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, everybody. My name is Rick Moore, and I'm from Brookline. Again, I would like to talk about rapid transit from the airport to downtown Pittsburgh and the impact that it has on our city and region. Today, I want to talk about, first tell a story that goes back 30 to 40 years ago, when I was sitting with my friends and we were talking about, I brought up the conversation about global warming. Now, I was met with overwhelming skepticism and ridicule, but I think that I knew what I was talking about then, and I think I know what I'm talking about now. If you want to have an impact on climate change and our carbon footprint, you will put in a rapid transit system between the airport and downtown, and hopefully someday continue on to, out to the Squirrel Hill Tunnel area and Wexford. This obviously is a no-brainer. It will be a great asset to the city. It's long overdue, and we need leadership. My friend recently said to me, "Why do you go down there? Nobody cares what you think, or nobody cares what you say." But I disagree. This is the public forum that we have here in the city of Pittsburgh. This is the Market Square Soapbox. People, listen down here. So join me in this conversation. Again, think about what I'm saying, do a little research, and talk to your friends about it. Have a great day, and take care. Thanks again.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's in Katy, where Irving's tires. For all the previous employees that worked for the city and Housing Authority, I want you to know that Bunky, everybody knew Bunky, his mother lived in our building, Katy Irving. She was 102. She just passed. I also want you to know that the residents of Katy Irving are concerned and prepared. They were concerned because we found out. I'm an advocate. I live in that building. I found out that the mayor came to the building, brought a proclamation, and a plaque for one of our residents who just moved in. Well, he's Sal Udine's brother. So now, we have, we put his paper in the picture, his picture in the paper with Brenda Tate fussing about the cars down there, which I praised the police because you stopped it. If I hear them, I will call. But also, took a picture. Then, when I go down to the meeting, it's something that they're having. I go down, and I hear them talking about this man that's cleaning up, and so on, and so on. And then, I thought they were going to say, "We have a man, Ray, that has been helping the citizens. He's a resident. I don't care for him, and he don't care for me. But he should have got a proclamation." Not your old crony, your politics. Your politics is dirty. I'm fussing because we have our lieutenant counsel, and they make the decision what happens in that building. Like when they brought DeWitt Walton for a photo op, they were running through, "We need residents. We need residents. Where's residents?" Now, she passed me, and when they came back again with another resident and Ms. G., and two white men, one with a camera, I had to move out the way because I was sweeping. I do that, too. Now, when they had this thing, they said, "Just family." But I looked, there was two little white children. Well, they don't belong in that building. They're not kin, as far as I know, to anybody in there. So I went and got my grandbaby, the little one that he said that shouldn't be coming down here. I brought her, and she's sitting there, and she hears me talking about cleaning up and stuff, and she's hitting me, "Grandma, Grandma, they gonna give you one, too." I said, "No, baby. They're not." And I knew they weren't. I'm not asking that they do it, but I'm asking, and like I told her, "Anytime you bringing up them split-tongued, lying, promising politicians, we all need to know." Every, there's 190 apartments up there. Everybody needs to know. And I want to know if in any way that we can take and have the Election Bureau come up, anytime there's any election up in that area, come up there. Because when I was running for secretary, they didn't put it on there. All right, I'm gone. My time.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing none, that takes us to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill 1393.
Bill 1393, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title 9, Zoning, Article 1, Section 902.03, zoning map by changing from R1DL, Residential Single Unit Detached, Low Density District, to UI, Urban Industrial District, Certain Property, Roughly bounded by Kelly Street, Fifth Avenue, Frankstown Avenue, and the Allegheny Valley Railroad Brilliant Line, all in the Allegheny County Block and Light System, 12th Ward.
Motion, first. Second.
He motioned to approve. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second. Heard to the sponsor?
This is, you know, a great day for our city, and a great day for the homeward community. It gets a giggle, which will also provide fresh fruits and fresh fruits and vegetables, and hot foods, and a sit-down cafe to the homeward community. So it's an exciting day for that community and that quarter.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our new papers, the first being Bill 1915.
Bill 1915, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in an Amount of $3,425 Over One Year, in Favor of Marie Barsik, in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Her Vehicle from an Accident with the City Police Vehicle.
Motion, draw, approve, please.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1916.
Bill 1916, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in an Amount Not to Exceed $21,633.77 Over One Year, in Favor of Ari Fleet, in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Their Stop Vehicle from the City Environmental Services, we're ending it and pushing it into another stop vehicle.
Motion, draw, approve, please.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Need a motion to approve the P cards. To move. I'm sorry. I went out of, I skipped ahead. I'm sorry. Need a motion to approve the invoices. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? P cards are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards now.
To move, please.
Second.
And we need a motion to waive the Rules of Council so that the PLI payment to Pennsylvania Department of DCD can be approved. To move.
To move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The rules have been waived. Any further discussion on the P cards? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? P cards have been approved. That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Kraus. We have one new paper, Bill 1914.
Bill 1914, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Evolve EA for Costs Associated with the Three Rivers Heritage Trail Maintenance and Management Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $145,949.72.
Motion, draw, approve, please.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. Our first deferred paper is Bill 270.
Bill 2022-0270, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordances, Title 7, Business Licensing, Article 10, Rental of Residential Housing by Amending It in Its Entirety, Chapter 781, Residential Housing Rental Permit Program.
He wants to read Bill 465, too?
Yeah, might as well.
Bill number 2022-0465, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title 5, Traffic, Article 7, Parking, Chapter 549, Residential Parking Permit Program, 549.08, Visitor Permits, Non-Resident Permits, so as to relate the issuance of residential parking permits for short-term rentals to the issuance of licenses by the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, authorizing the operation of short-term rentals in the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Second.
Question, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I have the PLI? And is this one here from the Law Department? Okay. We'll just... We'll see how far we get. Thanks for coming up. Sorry to see. We've been talking by phone, so I haven't seen you in person recently, so I hope everything's okay.
Yep.
All right. You say you're in, I want to make some comments, but since I welcomed you to the table, could you state your name and title?
Sure. David Green, and I'm the Acting Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections.
All right, thanks. So I just wanted you to come up because after I make some comments, I'm, you know, hoping you can describe some of the things that I'm talking about. But first and foremost, I just want to thank President Cal Smith for, you know, whenever this came down after the Airbnb shooting. That's, we're going on like a year and five months now. So, you know, it was great to work with everyone and also the other sponsors to make sure that there was something put down that we could, that we could work on. And what we found is that the best place to start would be, you know, to include this in a short-term, short-term rentals into, you know, originally, we were going to do it in a different chapter, but it would, you know, follow the same guidelines as we were going for with the rental registry, which had some issues in the courts recently. And so then, you know, it was good to work with the Law Department, the administration, PLI, so sort of Fritzen, the Council President, and other members that, you know, you know, welcomed all comments and all recommendations. Had a couple briefings on the bill that was amended by substitution. Basically, you know, we took the original bill, took that out, put the new one in, and the new one includes all rentals, whether you're going to rent for 24 hours or you're going to rent for two, two years. So the goal here is to, was to build something that will withstand the test of time in the courts. And so, you know, we realized there were some, some of these challenges. Everything was taken into account, you know, basically stripped it down to what, you know, we believe can, can stand the test of time. And so that is, you know, there's a few points here. The street address, and the block, and lot of the number of rental units, the, yeah, the number of rental units, the street address, the name, the address, the telephone number. Basically, there's several points that get that contact information. Doesn't require someone to go out and hire, you know, this one individual to be that person, like it wasn't a formal bill. There is a necessary copy of current valid government-issued photo ID for the applicant, and there's a copy of the valid occupancy permit. But, you know, I can go through some of these, all these different changes, but I think what we want to know is how we're going to, you know, hold rental properties accountable, whether it's 24 hours or two years. And I'm hoping you could speak to, you know, PLI's role in that. As, you know, in particular, the, what's laid out in the bill is the registration, the license inspection. Could you go over some of that?
Sure. So what the legislation does is require a rental, valid rental permit to operate a rental unit. And it defines a rental unit to include both more permanent as well as short-term rental units. And then there are two primary components to the permit. One is registration, which includes providing that contact info for the applicant as well as a valid certificate of occupancy for use of the rental unit unless it is exempt under the zoning or building codes from requiring a certificate. Once it makes through that registration process, pays the applicable fees, a provisional permit is issued. At that point, inspections are performed by PLI per the standards of the International Property Maintenance Code as adopted under Title 10. And a past inspection is required in order for a non-provisional permit to be issued. If we find deficiencies, we would provide a list of those deficiencies in writing to the applicant for the rental permit and a timeframe for them to resolve those issues.
Great. And is your, like the current staff right now, are you capable to, you know, when do you see the, what's the timeline here? And are you fully up to speed with staff to implement this program?
Sure. So the legislation as written makes this effective once we publish rules and regulations for the rental registration permit. And anticipate that our timeframe for that would likely be quarter one of 2024. And that gives us time to provide a draft of those regulations for the public to review and provide comment to us before we transmit to you as council and clerk office for official publishing of those rules. Also, in conjunction with that, one of the transitions needed is we will be coordinating with the Department of Public Works to take on enforcement of weeds and debris. And that coordination and that handoff is required for us to have the capacity to perform the necessary enforcement related to rental registration. So that gives us enough time to do both of those tasks and to ensure that DPW can jump in. Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay, great. I may make some further comments to that if members, you know, after members have some comments. But I also wanted to note that the second bill that was read, sorry, I lost my place, Bill 465. So here, some time ago, I don't remember the exact time, but RPP was overhauled. They introduced a bill that overhauled RPP, and included in that, there was never a system to, you know, to offer. There is a system to offer for apartment buildings, rental units. You know, people have properties that are, that weren't considered short-term rentals. There is a, you know, an avenue for that. For parking permits previously, but there wasn't one for short-term rentals. So, and then RPP bill, we tried to include that. So that's one is just amending it so that the license that's required here, a copy is given to the Pittsburgh Parking Authority.
Okay.
So that they can issue permits appropriately, or actually passes. So that's what that bill essentially does. So that's why we've been carrying them together. All right. No further comments at this time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Strasburger?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Wilson, for your work on this and for, you know, all members who have, who have been engaged in this and Acting Director, thank you for your assistance here. And I'm wondering for, mostly for the public, but if you are at liberty to tell us how inspections will be scheduled and conducted, will they be, you know, actually like scheduled upon issuance of, or, you know, as a condition before issuance of a permit? Will they only be scheduled like between tenants occupying the premises? Or will they be scheduled while tenants are occupying, you know, how will that work? Because I know there have been a lot of questions that I've received about that.
Sure. So the ordinance as written identifies that the applicant should notify Sure. So the ordinance as written, uh, identifies that the applicant should notify us when they would like to schedule that inspection. And then if they fail to, uh, schedule that inspection within a specific timeframe, that we would, um, reach out to, uh, to them and, uh, look to gain access, uh, to perform that inspection. It would be typical business practice to do so during normal business hours, uh, in, at the convenience of the, uh, property owner.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. And then my only other question right now is, are you able to tell us whether in the list of inspection criteria, the inspectors who have now been LED safe certified will be inspecting for lead in, in, inside the premises?
So, uh, this legislation does not include, uh, inspections for LED safe, uh, or LED regulations currently.
Mm-hmm. Okay. We'll follow up on that. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that the public heard, you know, the, some of the conversations that we had had, um, as a council in our briefing. So, thank you.
Yeah, so, thanks. Uh, so, yeah, I just had a few questions, sort of piecemeal questions. So, uh, one, and this might actually be a legal question, but, um, uh, an issue was raised about dormitories and the fact that dormitories are excluded from the legislation. The concern is that, I mean, dormitories that are owned by a university, like a giant, you know, what we think of as a dorm. That, that makes sense, right? That's the uni- I mean, it's sort of between the students and the university. But, uh, the concern was that, um, apparently, and, and this doesn't surprise me, that, uh, the, the big universities, especially in Oakland, will often lease buildings and use them as, you know, like lease a house and use it as a dormitory. So the concern is, are those buildings also exempt? And that, of course, because, I mean, the subpar housing for students in Oakland is an issue. And so we want to make sure that those folks are protected by, by this registry.
Yeah. So the legislation does define what a dormitory is, and so we would evaluate, uh, those, alternate scenarios where it's not, uh, what you would describe as, uh, traditional. And the definition does require it to be registered, uh, with the college or university. Uh, so we would look to the, um, the content of the legislation in terms of definition. And then if there is any need to, we can provide further clarification in our rules and regulations in terms of how we would address, uh, things that maybe fall outside of or into gray areas in the legislation.
Okay, so if there was a property owner who essentially said, I don't, you know, Pitt leases my building, so I don't need to register, then you would handle those on a case-by-case basis, or?
I haven't looked specifically at the dormitory issue, so, um, I would first evaluate, uh, what that definition is in the legislation. And then we have the opportunity, uh, uh, in the process of the rules and regs to address if there is a gray area in the legislation to provide clarity in terms of how we would, uh, operationalize and regulate that specific type of scenario in the rules.
Okay, yeah, because the definition of dormitory seems to, at least, I mean, I'm reading the legislation now, refers to the use of the building as opposed to the ownership of the building, right? So, I mean, again, I'm not this, but some kind of clarity where, you know, like if Pitt owns it, if it's a, you know, like, um, Litchfield Tower or whatever, one of those giant dorms, fine. That's, that's a dormitory, but, you know.
Part of what we would also look at is the application requires a certificate of occupancy. Um, so if someone is indicating that, uh, they are exempt, uh, from these requirements, we would look at what is the certificate of occupancy for that building or structure? If it doesn't explicitly indicate dormitory, uh, use, then I think it brings into question, that it would be regulated by this ordinance.
Okay, okay. Um, good. Just, just so that's clarified, just so it's on your radar as something that may come up. Um, and so I'm glad you mentioned certificate of occupancy. So, um, in the requirements, it says that you need to provide your certificate of occupancy, but it, it, does that apply to like mom and pop landlords that, I mean, I don't know, I'm thinking of my own house. Like, I don't know. I don't have, I mean, I don't have a certificate of occupancy if I wanted to like rent, you know, do like Airbnb my, you know, a house.
So, um, it requires it unless it's exempt, uh, under either the zoning code or, uh, the building code. So the zoning code does generally exempt, uh, single-family dwellings, uh, that are pre-existing, uh, from requiring a certificate. So there will be instances where, uh, there are, uh, properties that are regulated by the ordinance but may not need to provide a certificate of occupancy due to, uh, how those uses are regulated under the zoning and/or the building code.
Um, and a few, uh, process questions that came up. Well, one is, um, and, and we talked about this in the briefing, but just for the public, is, um, coordination with the housing authority, um, the city of Pittsburgh, uh, both, because they are, they are not exempt, like they, they also are required to register.
They are. Um, the ordinance does, uh, exempt fees for some, uh, affordable housing units. And there are standards for those affordable housing units to meet in order to be exempt from the fees of the pro, uh, regulation.
Okay. So, I mean, I, I could, I foresee, you know, perhaps the housing authority sort of objecting to being included in the registry. But that said, um, I feel like this actually is an opportunity for the city to help reduce their administrative load by, you know, but, but again, coordinating so that the requirements are this, you know, so that in order to be approved as a, as a housing authority, either, whether it's their own properties or a landlord, that it is the same, right? That it's the same requirements. And that way, PLI, you, you only have to do it once, right? And that, that PLI would then be taking over that burden, uh, you know, that administrative burden. So, I definitely encourage close collaboration with the housing authority on this. Let's see. Oh, yeah. Uh, another question was, and again, this is a process issue. I just, I don't know if you've thought about, but if there's a way, um, to empower, so I guess I'll start with this. What if a landlord doesn't register? What ha- like, what is the process there? Like, what happens?
Then we would, uh, take enforcement action, um, as described by the ordinance. Uh, and similar to the, any other enforcement action, we would, uh, issue a, uh, request for compliance that identifies their, uh, non-compliance with specific, uh, aspects of this regulation.
Okay.
And a timeframe in order for them to resolve those. And, uh, and this ordinance, if I am recalling correctly, uh, recognizes, um, non-compliance as a summary offense and allows us to request, uh, a, uh, penalty, a financial penalty of, uh, five hundred dollars, uh, per unit per month, uh, where they operate without a, a valid permit. So we would, uh, issue those requests for compliance. If they failed to comply, uh, prior to us issuing our, uh, third request for compliance, we would issue a criminal complaint. And then the magistrate would, um, uh, uh, schedule a hearing and send, uh, court paperwork to us as well as the property owner. And then, then the local magistrate would adjudicate, uh, that, our charges and make a determination, uh, as they deem appropriate.
So in terms of that, uh, are, are we gonna sort of empower ten- I mean, so how, I guess, thank you. That was the, the answer maybe. But I guess what I was really getting at is how do you find out, right? Like, so is it tenants complaining, saying that like a, you know, like a property? So in that case, that, that kind of brings me to my other question is if there is a way to sort of empower the magistrates, um, to make sure that the landlords are registered before they can exercise any type of, any issues that they, that landlords are having with their own tenants, right? That a, that a precursor to that would be to show that their property is in fact registered. I don't know if that's, even if it's sort of an un, if it's not an official thing, but I know that you have folks who work in each magistrate's office, that might be.
We can attempt to coordinate to the extent we can with the magistrates. Uh, in terms of enforcement, uh, a majority of our enforcement is complaint-based. Uh, so I would imagine tenants or neighborhood constituents who, uh, may recognize a rental unit and may be causing potential issues for them would submit a complaint, and that's how we would find out. We, we also do, uh, find things out on our own, but by and large, uh, the three-one-one complaint system is where we find a bulk of our enforcement.
Okay, okay. So, all right. So that would, I mean, that would be good just sort of as a education campaign with this is to let tenants know, like, look, you're, you know, you're, you there, there is a standard to which your landlord is, you know, being held by the city, and you should let us know if they're not, and then we'll make sure that, you know, they're registered, et cetera.
Yeah. And that registration will mean that there is a minimum level of safety, uh, for their, uh, rental unit, which I think, uh, most tenants would find value in.
Okay, I think that's all my questions. Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you, Mr. Green. I just wanted to take a minute. What we haven't done since we've been talking about this so long is recap that we've been fighting, just again, for the public might have tuned in, for fifteen years to get to a point where we can have a registry of apartments. And have been preempted by the courts in Pennsylvania, even though other municipalities in Pennsylvania have registries of apartments. And we need it because we have bad actors out there who really are living people, uh, letting people live in conditions that are just completely, um, unlivable. And those tenants don't have much of a choice, right? And we, I, I think we're actually losing, we lose people, um, who have to move outside the city because of the lack of apartments that are livable and affordable, right? Um, and so bringing code compliance is part of it, and we can't bring those apartments up to code if we can't, don't know where they are and can't inspect them, right? So that's that section. And then we had this new housing problem, which is the expansion of Airbnbs, both in the kinds of problem nuisance Airbnbs, but also in the proliferation of them just being so many and, and so plentiful and, and needing to, to regulate those as well for, um, our citizens and the health of our neighborhoods. So that we have this combined thing. I'm going to do the same thing. I think Councilwoman Warwick, Councilwoman Warwick asked some of my questions was like, if you're not renting out, like, I, I've never done Airbnb, but okay, so I've seen people do it, I've watched people do it. So let's say, like at the beginning of Airbnb, someone just wants to rent out just one room in their house, and they're still there. Like, that still happens, I think, but not very much, is what I understand is happening in the, the city now. Even, I think the question, the way Councilwoman Warwick asked it was like, what if I want to list my whole house? But it's still my house, I'm just gone for the weekend or something. What if, I'm doing this for the very first time, I've never done it before, and I just want to say, hey, you can stay in this extra bedroom for the weekend? Again, I, I don't think people do that much, but at the beginning of Airbnb, that was actually the predominant way that people did things. Is that, is every house that you can imagine in the city of Pittsburgh exempt under the occupancy codes?
So what I was referring to previously was whether or not, uh, there would need to be a valid certificate of occupancy accompanying that application. I would, uh, that would be separate from, uh, if I'm understanding correctly, your question, whether or not it would be generally regulated under this ordinance?
Do I, yeah, what do I do? Okay, okay. It's like, oh, you know, the kids have gone off to college. Gosh, I'm worried about my property tax bill. I've got this extra bedroom. Here, let me register an Airbnb. Oh, wait, do I have to call David Green? What do I do next?
So I would say, uh, that use would be regulated, uh, under this ordinance, uh, as a rental unit, and, uh, a permit would be required. Uh, the evaluation of whether or not that application would need a certificate of occupancy, uh, to accompany it would be a, a separate evaluation, uh, that I, I don't know that I can provide a definitive answer to at the moment.
But PLI would tell me if I was, by calling PLI or going on the website, it would explain that to me. Right? Because maybe I live in a brand-new condo in the strip district and there is an occupancy permit. Right? Or maybe I live in an apartment and there is actually an occupancy permit for the unit, right? Okay, so, all right, that's, that's one hypothetical. And the other, the other thing I'm trying to wrap my mind around is that, and I acknowledge that PLI had a briefing, but I just didn't think of that question before the briefing, so I'm thinking of it now. I have an absolute passion for single-room occupancy that I've talked about many times before, right? From in the nineteen nineties, looking at historical boarding and lodging houses, of which Pittsburgh had many, entire neighborhoods built on boarding and lodging houses, which are single rooms, that's single-room occupancy. So, you know, you have a room, and it may or may not have, um, at the time, a hundred years ago, you know, they had neither a cooking facility nor a sanitary facility. And I see there's a definition J here for sleeping unit that says can have a cooking facility or sanitary facility, but not both. So I guess I have a twofold question. We have been restoring single-room occupancy, historic single-room occupancy, like the YMCA in the North Side, like other YMCA's, um, around town. There are continuously existing more than a hundred-year-old boarding houses in my district, which, of which I love. So how do they, you know, even if they're not being, they technically kind of are short-term rentals in a way, but they're not Airbnbs being rented out for night. What do they do? What do those operators do next?
They would likewise be regulated under this ordinance, and, uh, they would may, need to make an application. Hopefully, they have an existing certificate of occupancy for the SRO use.
I don't know about the hundred-and-ten-year-old ones or hundred-and-twenty-year-old ones.
If it's a hundred-and-ten-year-old one, uh, those have a, a greater potential, uh, to be exempt from the certificate of occupancy requirements because both the zoning code and the building code recognize uses prior to the adoption of both of those ordinances. So that, um, uh, that will be part, absolutely part of, uh, this regulation, addressing those older, more historic uses and navigating whether or not it is appropriate for us to say, uh, we need a certificate of occupancy or we don't as part of that application. But would anticipate, um, that we would provide guidance on that and that we would also coordinate closely with the Department of City Planning and the zoning administrator in terms of making those, uh, determinations, uh, to, on the zoning code side versus, uh, the building code.
Great, thank you. Um, and so kind of along that line, what's on my mind, and it's, we've had a long discussion at council, including a committee chaired by Councilwoman Coghill on how to house our unhoused population. And we suggested transitional housing, right? And in that case, that would be more like a county-run facility. Um, and in fact, the county has really turned a corner from a year and a half ago and is providing, not just at Wood Street Commons, but at, at some new facilities. Um, I think Councilwoman Coghill's touring one next week, um, where they are single-room occupancy and they are, um, also have twenty-four-hour-a-day supportive services. Where does that fall?
Those, some of those facilities may be exempt. Uh, the ordinance excludes certified rehabilitation, uh, facilities. So, um, depending on the nature of those uses and the services provided, uh, they may, uh, fall into a category that would be exempt from this ordinance.
Excellent. That's, that's what I was worried about, right? With the last that we want to do is shut down one of our brand-new transitional housing units that we have been working so hard for. And we need, we need to encourage and have more of. So that, I, I appreciate that. So that, I appreciate that answer, I'm glad you thought of that. And let's, let's hope this works. Thank you, thank you for your work. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Coghill?
Thank you. So David, tell me what this means, this legislation means to your workload.
So it will mean that our operations unit will take on a new branch of enforcement and that's part of why we're looking to coordinate transitioning weeds and debris enforcement to DPW. But we, we have sufficient staff to, to address this workload and confident on that front. There will, I presume, be a learning curve both for us as well as applicants once we initiate the program. But it is not drastically different than other licenses and registrations that we already review and issue and then also perform inspections. So while a different flavor, so to speak, confident that we can be effective in enforcing this regulation.
So how many inspections do you anticipate?
I don't have numbers on that, apologies if I could follow up on that.
And you feel you are staffed?
Yes.
In order to handle it?
Yep, particularly the, the volume related to weeds and debris, that's a large chunk of our current.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Weeds and debris complaints are a large volume of the complaints that we receive through 3-1-1 on the code enforcement side. So feel comfortable that the volume associated with this should be comparable to that scope as well.
Without adding staff?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, any further questions? Before second round, I have a clarifying question just for my own self. Regarding the occupancy permit, if I already, if a unit already has an occupancy permit filed, do they then have to get an additional rental permit?
Yes, the, the application requirement to have the certificate is to ensure that that use is legal. And then we're also recognizing that there are standards under both the building and zoning code, as I mentioned earlier, where there are pre-existing uses that were in existence prior to the adoption of either those standards where a certificate may not be necessary in order for that use to be legal. So if there is an existing certificate of occupancy for whatever use is associated with that rental unit, that is one component that they would need as part of the registration, but they would still need to register as a, to obtain a rental permit in order to be in compliance with this ordinance.
Okay, and once this goes into effect, then effective, effectively, every rental unit within our city will need to go through this process?
Yes.
The Councilman Coghill's question, correct?
Yes.
Okay. When they get the permit, does the permit also spell out how many people can be inside the unit?
The, I believe we're asking them to identify the number of units or some basic info on the property. The, it is generally typical that the certificate of occupancy should in some fashion quantify either the number of units or in some fashion, the number of occupants.
Okay, let, let me ask the question differently, because I'm trying to get to the whole Airbnb conversation. So I have a certificate of occupancy on my home. If I were to decide that I'm going away for a month, there's a bunch of Steeler Games coming up, I want to rent my home out, do I need to come in and say, okay, I have three bedrooms and so therefore I'm getting a rental permit for each bedroom? And then does it also regulate to say, well, if I'm doing that, then two families can use this room, two families can use this room, two families can use, because that's where the, sort of the rub lies in terms of how many people you're actually allowing to then be inside of a property?
Yeah, part of the inspection process would be confirming compliance and/or conformance with the certificate of occupancy and then also the information that the applicant has provided and then the standards of the property maintenance code in terms of minimizes for rooms, for example, and the number of occupants who can utilize those areas within a building. So it's, it's likely not a, necessarily a black-and-white issue and likely something that will, we will adjust over time as we, particularly on the Airbnb side, because it has not been a, a strong regulation by the city under the building or zoning code. So there will be some work for us to, to navigate those issues.
Just to be clear, I have no issues with this bill at all. I'm just trying to think through the cases that have been problematic for us is when we're overcrowding. And this doesn't address that problem, that issue. The, my other question, this is just a longstanding concern I've had. Currently, you're not allowed to have more than three unrelated people renting inside of a unit, is that correct?
There are limits under the zoning code, under the number of individual, unrelated individuals who can occupy a dwelling unit. And apologies, I, I don't recall what that number is offhand, but we, those types of scenarios would likely come into play as we perform inspections and enforcement under this legislation if passed.
I think I'm correct when I say that, but one of the challenges, I am, Corey, thank you, Corey says I'm correct. But one of the challenges historically, and maybe this helps us get there, is that when someone says, and it's usually in or around the universities, where they say, okay, there's not supposed to be more than three unrelated individuals inside this unit, there's six kids in here. And historically, PLI has been able to say, well, we can't actually prove that, despite the fact that I can count every morning how many kids come out, right? Or can we go get the mail and see that there's six different people receiving mail? Like this, it's just been a historical problem, I'm not suggesting we have a way to address it. I'm just trying to think through, does this legislation open up a way by which we can address that piece of it?
I think there is a potential in terms of the information we're asking as part of the registration as well as verifying legal use related to the certificate of occupancy and then the inspection standards. I, I don't want to be unrealistic and say that's going to be, you know, completely effective, but I think there are opportunities here for us to start to address those issues. And then as we operationalize this, also opportunities either as needed to modify the legislation and/or update our rules and regulations to help address issues like this that may arise that we can't fully anticipate until we're actually enforcing an ordinance.
Okay. Okay, as, as we were sitting here, I actually looked up a home to see what their certificate of occupancy was. And it's just a regular certificate of occupancy that you have for a home, but it's also a home that I absolutely know is being rented out to students every single year. So we would then have to report to that individual, once this goes into effect, you now need to follow this program. And if you don't, we now have a legal means by which to address it.
Okay.
Thank you. Second round, I saw a couple of hands go up. Councilman Wilson and then Councilman Strasburg and Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, could you elaborate on how the contact that will be, the contact that we give into PLI will be helpful in other situations that you run into with, you know, with enforcement?
Yeah.
Or some other issues that you could speak to?
Yeah, so I think some of the challenges that we face on a regular basis on code enforcement is our access to responsible parties based on the county's property records and the ownership information there. And there are a lot of properties that have either been abandoned and there's no responsible agent, but there is still someone identified as the owner, they may be deceased. Having this and having a valid contact information of someone to contact if there are issues as well as to send notification to if code enforcement is a requirement as part of, due to non-compliance that will lead to cleaner enforcement. Magistrates are obviously looking for us to ensure that proper notification have been provided to defendants. And if the registration process will provide us with an individual who has said, I am associated with this property and provided us contact information that then we can use to provide notification to them.
Right, because it's unacceptable that homeowners, we can, do you have the same issue with homeowners? Sorry, I'm like leading on here, but do you have the same issue with homeowners?
Yes.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I, I think.
I thought, I thought it was pretty straightforward, you know? This person owns the house, you cite them.
Not necessarily, and this is particularly on the code enforcement side for condemned, emblazoned properties. We have a whole host of properties that we refer to as dead-end cases.
Oh yeah, the dead-end list.
Yeah, so I don't want to say it's.
But still, you at least have a, you at least have a, a name that you're seeing, right?
We have a name and we do have access to databases to help do additional legal research.
Right, it's not someone that's created, you know, five different LLCs and you're trying to track down that one person.
No, that's not typically the case, but it, it can still provide some difficulties in our enforcement process.
So yeah, we just want the same standard where we have a contact. And so I think this will, I mean, the main, the, a very important part of this, of this bill, which I think was the original, like, one of the original intent was not only to keep people safe, right? When you, that you know when you're going to rent a property that it's going to be up to code, but also that if there is a situation that we need to get in contact with that owner, that we have the proper contact. So, you know, we're not going to be in the dark anymore, I mean, that's the goal, to not be in the dark anymore. And I think what we were seeing with these Airbnbs is that they were just, you know, just, you know, a faceless company, a faceless company is that, you know, really just exacerbated the problem. So, you know, it's even more than an LLC, it's just some, you know, online rental that they're popping in, they're popping out. And it's just, you know, it leads to issues like we saw on the North Side, you know, over a year ago. And to have actual contact for the neighborhood to know, you know, that we're, that we're gonna, where we're literally taking the first step to, to figure out who owns the property and who's the proper contact, whether or not that's property for people to, even to safely be in there. You know, and then to have some accountability with, like, what's been, been mentioned here with bad actors is, is essential. So want to make sure that, that that was said, that this, that, just that contact, even the process, you know, people go before, you know, for citations, the judge or magistrate, that we can actually, you know, contact that person and ones held to the same standard.
Yep.
Well, thanks, I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Councilman Strasburg?
Thank you. To the extent that you're able to tell us, how do you plan, since we don't currently have a registry, how do you plan to notify the public that is going to be needing to adhere to this rule or to this law? Both rentals, like longer-term rentals and short-term rentals?
So we do provide notification on our website when we make various changes. So we would include notification on our website. There'd be initial process where we're publishing those draft roles for comment. And then it is potential that we may be able to use, search certificates of occupancy and come up with a rudimentary list and provide some targeted mailings to individuals who are likely to be regulated by this ordinance to provide additional or tailored notification.
Do you want to cast the widest net possible right off the bat? Like, to Councilman Coghill's point, do you have the capacity to? Or is it actually preferable if you do the best you can and then capture more and then capture more kind of into the system as we go? I mean, because I think if it's the former, I think that continuing conversations with council, we have the, you know, we have networks as well and other, other departments as well. Maybe there's a more comprehensive way to ensure that those who need to know about this know about it right off the bat rather than two years from now.
No, I think it would be most ideal to try to cast the widest net as possible and to use as wide a network of providing notifications. So if, you know, council or other agencies can help coordinate on that, I think it would be best to try to provide as wide a notification so people are aware of it. I would prefer that if we're enforcing this and that they are going to face potential penalties, that we take as many steps as necessary to make them aware of that potential prior to receiving an enforcement letter from us. So I think it is appropriate for us to, to try as much as possible to do as much public outreach so that this is not a surprise for the people who would be regulated by the ordinance.
Okay, thanks, we'll continue to, you know, please utilize council as we, as we can be helpful in that effort as well. The second thing isn't really a question, but just to Councilman Lavelle's point, I have long had concerns about our definition of a family and three unrelated living together and the rules around that. I think it's terribly outdated and I don't want to necessarily solve it with this legislation or today. It's much, much bigger, but just to note that I think at some point in the near future we should have a discussion about the outdated definition of family when it comes to the number of people who are legally allowed to live on the premises together. That's all.
Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, so I thought of some more questions just as, as we were talking. So first is just, so I, I'm assuming the inspection criteria is just the same criteria that you use now, right? For a building being safe?
Yes, so again, this ordinance points to standards under the International Property Maintenance Code. What this legislation does is provides us a right to entry to perform those inspections. So currently, our right to entry is only if someone grants us it. So most of our enforcement is based on what we can see from the public right-of-way. So it is not drastically different than what we do now. It will allow us to be more in-depth and to access the interior of a building, these rental units, to ensure that they meet those national standards.
Okay, so just, just for, for, you know, landlords out there that may be thinking, oh no, the city's going to come in and make me like remodel my whole apart, like my whole place, that's not what is happening here.
No, these are maintenance standards. So ensuring that there's a minimum level of safety and that there are no distinct hazards for the occupants. So it's not requiring updating things, it's really ensuring that the property has been maintained appropriately and can be safely occupied.
Right, okay, so with that in mind, in terms of like the inspection criteria, will there be, so, I mean, I can just, you know, so you have the registry, let, let's say, you know, the person, you know, the, the landlord is registered or the property is registered, you have that information. And someone calls 3-1-1 and says, you know, whatever, there's exposed wires in the bathroom that, that my landlord isn't fixing. that my landlord isn't fixing." So, what is the process then? So, you call the landlord and say, "We need to look at this"?
So, under the ordinance, if they had passed an inspection, that inspection is valid for three years.
Okay.
So, under the ordinance, we may not take action, but we may, generally under the Property Maintenance Code, request access to investigate that complaint to say there is a hazard and they have a right to refuse entry. We can also, if we have reasonable cause to feel that there is a hazard, we could seek an administrative warrant to gain access to perform that investigation.
And would there also be, I'm sort of, because we're sort of entering into like landlord-tenant dispute issues, right? So, would, I mean, since you do have the contact, would you then call them and say, "Hey, you have a tenant in this unit saying XYZ is wrong"?
We would, we do try to have complainees remain anonymous. A little difficult, obviously. For rental units, it's probably obvious that it is a tenant, but we, I would anticipate that we would contact them and say, "Hey, we've received this complaint and request access to investigate."
And then, so that, so in terms of the folks receiving these complaints, so 311, will they, I mean, do you have a plan to coordinate? So, for example, so that 311 operators are familiar with the list so that, say someone calls and says, "My landlord isn't fixing my fridge." Well, that's maybe not something that is a, right? That, I mean, I don't know. I don't know what the, but I assume that, you know, a major appliance like a fridge is not necessarily covered by this. Will 311 be able to say, "Well, that's not covered here"?
So, typically, 311 is really making, aiding in routing the complaint to the appropriate agency. So, they are not typically making an assessment of whether there may be a violation or not. So, they should be aiding in making sure that gets routed to PLI. And then our inspector would be, receive that complaint and then investigate. And depending on the nature of the complaint, if it was identifying an element that we would not directly regulate, we may respond to that complaint and simply say, "There is no violation here because we do not directly regulate this appliance or whatever." But it would go to an individual who is familiar with our regulations, an inspector, to make that assessment.
And I'm assuming this registry, this is all, this will all be done online? So, all of this information will be available to, so, for example, that's really, so, so let's going back to the Airbnb or even a rental unit. So, you, a lot of the times, it's not just neighbors, right? I'm sorry, it's not just tenants, it's neighbors, right? So, you have an Airbnb next door where, whatever, there's parties, you know, parties going on, that type of thing. So, they will call. Will public safety, so if they have a noise complaint, which isn't really, I mean, even if they're registered, right, a noise complaint isn't really something that you deal with, does public safety also going to have access to this so that they can?
It will be within the one-stop PTH system. And I would anticipate that it would be available through building our agency counter, similar to all our other permits, licenses, and registrations. And I, I'm not entirely sure what direct access public safety may have currently, but they would minimally have the same information that is available to the general public. And then we can also look to coordinate whether more direct access to this data would be appropriate for their staff to have.
Okay, okay, sounds good. And then, just, sorry, just so I'm, so you have a neighbor, because we do get a lot. I mean, I hear complaints about Airbnbs in particular, you know, "Oh, there's so many people coming in and out", which in and of itself is not necessarily a bad, right, but it's just something that sort of irks the neighbor. So, if someone calls and says, "There's this Airbnb, there's constantly people coming in and out at all hours of the night or they're having a party or whatever," they come to, you know, they make a complaint, this Airbnb is indeed registered. The answer then is just, "Well, Airbnb is legal." I mean, just to make it clear for everybody what this means, it doesn't mean that we're going to, like, get rid of your nuisance Airbnb next door necessarily.
No, it won't. There is potential that the activity related to the complaint may lead to a referral to another agency if there is some other activity, but it wouldn't necessarily address holistic concerns people have about this type of use.
Right, so this, and this is sort of what I'm getting to, is that, again, this has been said, but, you know, this is really about making sure that the house is safe, that the house is safe for the people who are in it.
Yes.
Right, and that we can follow up with that and make sure, whether that be an Airbnb user or a long-term tenant or a short-term tenant or...
Yes, I would agree with that statement.
Thank you. Councilman Calkil?
Thank you. So, David, it's once every three years you have to?
So, the permit registration is required annually. Once you pass an inspection, that is only required once every three years. So, we want that continual registration so that we have that point of contact and we understand that the rental unit is still active. And that also allows us to refine our fees so that there, we're anticipating that we would have a fee associated with registration and separate fee associated with inspection so that there would be years where you're paying just the registration or administrative fee and not the inspection fee.
Except every third year, you pay both?
Yeah.
How much is that fee?
We have not proposed a specific fee because we don't have legislation allowing us to propose those fees yet. But we would, if this legislation is passed, that would be included in our proposed fee schedule for you guys' review as part of the budget process.
Okay. Help me out here. When would you send an inspector? Every registrate, every registration? I mean, when would you, when would PLI send an inspector?
So, we would, we would hope that a majority of the applicants would contact us to schedule inspections.
All applicants?
But understand, based on our construction experience, that does not always occur. So, we would look to use our system to manage those and target provisional permits that have been issued without a valid inspection and then contact them to try to schedule those inspections.
So, the idea is every application would require a PLI inspector?
Yep.
That is so hard to imagine that you wouldn't be overrun with, I mean, you're going to physically send an inspector to every applicant.
Yeah, I, we-
We don't do that now because we don't go inside.
We don't go inside now, but we are, right now, responding to tens of thousands of weed and debris complaints.
Yeah, but this is a whole new ballgame.
Understood, but also understand that we are not going to get every rental unit apply at the same time.
Sure.
It's going to be a progressive-
If you compare the weed-
Yeah.
-problem to applicants, I would think these applicants are going to far outnumber your-
But I don't want to minimize the work, but we are confident, based on the other programs we have managed, that we will be able to manage the application process and the inspection process and ensure that we are proceeding on as necessary.
So, PLI will inspect the property and they find lid paint or, you said there won't be, there will not be testing for lid paint?
They will not be testing for lid paint under this current version of the legislation.
What will they be looking for?
They will be looking for compliance with the International Property Maintenance Code requirements for the rental unit-related uses. So, that can be everything from ensuring that there's functional heating and plumbing systems to ensuring that the physical infrastructure of the rental units have been maintained so that, you know, there's no hazards associated, you know, like the ceiling's not falling, et cetera.
They don't, like, inspect the roof?
No, they'll be looking at the rental unit-
The inside.
Inside and ensuring, you know, things like, is there a smoke alarm as required? Carbon monoxide alarms if those are required. So, those basic safety features and that the building's systems are operational and maintained so they can, they're in safe operation and not creating a hazard for the occupants.
How many inspectors do you have?
Apologies, I want to say 2025 in the operations unit, but that may be off. I don't have org chart right in front of me.
Okay, I guess I'll trust your judgment. It's hard to imagine, again, because a lot of the complaints I get are delays with PLI now, whether it's a weed or, you know, unsafe structure. And to add, God knows how many more calls you're going to get. You can't even anticipate, right?
We can estimate and predict as best we can, but until we're actually there, you know, no one knows for sure what the real volume will be. But, again, based on other programs that we have, we have a good organizational understanding of managing applications and inspections and doing so in a systematic fashion to ensure timeliness.
So, if an inspector goes in, finds something, a violation, they are then to correct it and then the inspector has to come back?
Yes.
I got to imagine there's forty, fifty thousand rentals in the city of Pittsburgh. That's just, I'm just guessing. Okay, I'm concerned about your workload. I am, but you seem confident that you can handle it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think you're overestimating how many people voluntarily are going to make that call, but-
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, just want to make a point of clarification because I'm not sure, it was said it was like, it would be online, like, the information we get from BWA. I just want to make sure that it's not going to be like a public-facing, online, you know, database that the public can go and look at. Because the Commonwealth Court took issue with that, so this will be an internal, this will only be internal so that we're, you know, making sure that this, that we're upholding something that will withstand the test of time.
Yes, if there's restriction on the information that we can make publicly available, we would limit that, but to the extent that basic information in terms of there is a rental permit associated with the property and-
Right, right, proper contact information.
We would not be providing, yeah, yeah, not the contact information. What I would be referring to is similar to other licenses, registration of the permits, basic information. There's a rental permit here and what is the status related to it? Is it in the application process? Is it received an inspection? Has it, the final permit been issued, et cetera? So, that there'd be basic publicly available information to verify whether someone had it registered and whether we'd issued a permit.
Okay. Other than that, just want to thank you for running a tight ship and being operationally ready to take this on, which has been a long, top priority of council. So, thanks.
Calkil?
Just for clarification, as, you know, Councilman Lovell just mentioned, not everybody's going to call. But if I apply, you're then, you're going to send an inspector?
Yes.
Correct?
Yep.
So, you're going to put the word out there in one way or the other that there's new regulations? And once, if providing everybody follows the new regulations, they don't have to call. You're now, the onus is on you to go inspect.
Yes. And we will have contact information and we will have a process to manage that and to provide opportunities for individuals to provide us access and then also procedures. If they refuse us entry to perform those inspections, we would seek an administrative warrant. But yes, it, I don't want to minimize it, but there will be, there will be a lot of management here but not, not far afield from other things we do. I mean, we issue ten thousand permits a year and we manage those relatively well and we have that organizational experience that can apply to this in a similar fashion.
Okay, so if they do not apply, just didn't hear about it, didn't get the information, then how do you regulate that?
We would either need to receive a 311 complaint or have some other indicator that it is a rental unit and that they do not have a valid-
You mentioned Public Works. What role would they have in enforcement, did you say?
They are going to take over our enforcement of weeds and debris, debris, so that we have the organization-
You're going to take that off your plate?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that helps.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
No. This should be a number I think that council should have in front of it, but it just kind of speaks to the reason we're doing this, which is we don't really know exactly how many apartments are out there in the city, right? And so, we can, like, impute, right? It's like, okay, so there's like a hundred and fifty thousand or so dwelling units. And we know that, like, half the population are renters, right? Because they responded to the US Census or something like that. So, it's conceivable that there's something like seventy to eighty thousand apartments out there. And again, just a reminder, it's not like a new city where, they're not always obvious from the street because they're not all in big apartment buildings where you drive past it and that's clearly an apartment building in the city of Pittsburgh. As I mentioned earlier, we have our older single-family homes, the homes that were built as a single-family that have been converted into apartments or operating illegally as apartments. Some of them may be way over the, you know, zoning permit. There, you know, might be legal to have three apartments in that house that, maybe it was your grandmother's house or maybe it was a house somebody just bought and is operating as apartments, but they might have chopped it up into eight apartments. And so, we really don't know. And that's why we need this registry so that we actually really know where the apartments are and that we can make sure that they're habitable and up to code and safe electrically, you know, so safe for the neighbors too. This is a fire hazard in neighborhoods where there's maybe illegal wiring and there's a very highly densely packed neighborhood of timber houses. So, this is just a fundamental issue that, like, we've been struggling with this rental registry for so long. Sometimes we forget to mention the very basics of why it's so fundamentally necessary that we know where apartments are and can inspect them. So, again, it's been a very, very long road. Let's keep our fingers crossed. And I just wanted to mention that kind of, that there's a significant volume. In the city of Pittsburgh, about half our residents are renters. It's close to sixty percent, thank you. So, yeah, and in some neighborhoods, it's higher. So, this is fundamental to the city operating and using its authority to regulate buildings. So, I appreciate it.
Orbit?
Yeah, so just to sort of underscore what, so if you're a landlord, you register your property and that, the info is basically just contact information unless you have an occupancy permit, but which for a single-family home probably doesn't apply. But, so it's basically just contact information, you register, and then PLI will get in touch about scheduling the inspection at some point, right?
Yes, the legislation does point to the, if the applicant fails to request an inspection within a timeframe, that we would contact them.
Okay.
So, presume- So uh presume that there's gonna be some variation or spectrum of applicants, some who will be proactive and look uh to schedule those inspections and get their permit quicker.
Right.
And some that we uh will need to manage and uh probably contact more than once uh before we can perform that inspection.
Yeah, so I just I just wanna make it clear, just so that landlords are not afraid of this, right? You just register, it's basically just contact information, like you're just saying, I have this rent, you know, here's kind of be a modest fee and whatever that ends up being. Um and then you'll have an inspection, so if you have an apartment that is a decent apartment, doesn't have wires sticking out and doesn't have, you know, the ceiling caving in, like a place where a po- then you're you're gonna pass your inspection and you're gonna be fine for the next five or whatever, is it five years, three years, three years? So this is not, this is not catastrophic, this is not something to be afraid of, it's just a, you know, and thi- this is really there for the the bad actors who are not maintaining their apartments, you know, which is.
And it's also, the landlords uh could also show a passed inspection as uh potentially a selling feature to tenants because some independent agency, PLI, has inspected this to a national standard and found it to be safe, to be occupied and to be a legal uh rental unit, so um not everyone necessarily will find value in that, but there can be some value there and uh could aid in their ability to rent those units, uh tenants having confidence that uh those units are safe to occupy.
So and what and and I also just sort of, I just sort of, so for tenants, um in these inspections, PLI will not be looking to see if you have a pet that you're not supposed to have on your lease, or if you have likes, you know, your partner living with you, you didn't necessarily, like that is not what PLI is interested in, that's not what they're looking at.
Nope.
So tenants also do not need to be worried about this.
No.
Right?
This is uh really about the physical environment of the rental unit and the building systems that support it, ensuring that they are properly operating and do not pose a hazard to the occupants.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um adjacent to this conversation, I know we've been talking a lot about weeds and debris and that's staggering, that's about ten thousand inspections a year on that. Anyway, so Environmental Services also has been ramping up their enforcement and inspections around um uh you know, what they've tr- traditionally been inspecting on, um trash and um late and early set-out and improperly stored trash and um have ramped up their ability to do that, and after a meeting with them, I thought it would be valuable for all council members and staff to hear a briefing on that, thinking perhaps in the new year when we have two new council offices um and new staff, that might be a good time for that and perhaps a conversation about um what their role will be around weeds and debris, um if and when this goes into effect and um just, you know, for all of us to be aware of this new system, because um as far as I can tell, it is resulting in more houses that are improperly storing their garbage, ending up in Magisterial District Court, and that's helpful to us. So I think the system is working and I'd like for everyone to just, you know, have the same um opportunity to ask questions and know about this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation on both bills. That moves us on to Bill eighteen seventeen.
Bill eighteen seventeen, ordinance to mending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zoning Code, Article Six, Chapter nine nineteen, signs to regulate the use of non-advertising signs for major major public destination facilities in the RIV NS District.
Motion to approve. Second. I'm gonna hold it first.
Okay.
Councilman Wilson?
I'm sorry, um I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna, um what's the, what's the action here? Or send the?
Motion.
Motion to withdraw your approval.
Yeah, motion to withdraw the uh approval.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, if you'd be willing to.
Yeah, uh motion to hold for uh five weeks.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill be held for five weeks. That takes us to Bill nineteen seventeen.
Bill nineteen seventeen, resolution further amending Resolution Number Eight Forty of two thousand and nineteen, effective December twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty through Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Capital Improvement Program by reducing Axiom Advancement Corporation as a grant recipient and increasing Hill District CDC by five thousand dollars and authorizing a subsequent agreement.
Motion to approve. Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill nineteen eighteen.
Bill nineteen eighteen, resolution further amending Resolution Number Six Forty-seven of two thousand and twenty, effective December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-One Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-One Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-One through Two Thousand and Twenty-Six Capital Improvement Program by reducing Axiom Advancement Corporation as a grant recipient and increasing Hill District CDC by eight thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars and authorizing a subsequent agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Recreation, Youth and Senior Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Strasburger. We have one supplement, one new paper, Bill nineteen forty.
Bill nineteen forty, resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with the Outdoor Inclusion Network for the purpose of establishing a geared lending library for use in Riverview Park and the co-creation of training that prepares youth-serving organizations for outdoor camping experiences. This service is provided at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Would the director please join us up here?
Good morning.
Morning.
Still morning?
Yes, well.
Barely. Would you please state your name and title?
Sure, uh Catherine Vargas, Director of Parks and Recreation, City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. This should be a short um conversation. I really just wanted to bring you up here to be able to highlight this amazing program. I can actually, if if Councilman Wilson has, I don't know how much a part you were of this, but if you also like to um say a few words or diff- I can defer to you as well, but um having come through the city, this this um committee, I wanted to make sure to highlight this great work, so. If you'd like to, uh I'll I'll defer to the councilman and then you can uh describe it a little bit more as well.
Thank you, um thank councilperson. So, yeah, I think this this started whenever I introduced the the bill to allow you to enter into authorize, you know, the Director of uh Parks and Rec to to um what is it, to enter into contracts with.
Yeah.
You know, to make that decision whether or not camping will be permissible in in the, you know, in any of our parks.
Yes, and um and so first I do wanna thank you, uh Councilman Wilson, for your support in getting us to where we are now. Um it was about a year ago when we um changed a code that would allow us to consider what it would look like for um young people to have access to our parks to um to camp. Um and so this particular agreement um is actually a result of the conversation we had with council around, you know, the best way to move forward on this. What it does is it allows per the code change for the Director of the Department, the city, to have those agreements with folks who would actually be doing the camping. We are maintaining that relationship internally. Um but the partner who we've been working really closely with this initiative on, um and how they sort of bring um a a lot to the table here is by way of having the um resources to um provide materials that end that, you know, organizations and groups can use to be able to um camp, cuz that's an expensive feat. Um and that is at no cost to us as the city, and then also working with us along with our Pittsburgh Park Rangers on developing a training to ensure that anybody who's coming into the park to do this has a baseline understanding of like what it means to be a a good steward of of, you know, of the park while practicing camping, and that's for adults, it's for young people. Um and so uh right now, we're in a position where we've developed that training, we've developed um what the relationship could look like around the use of um of outdoor gear um in the park, and we're excited uh that this would allow us to move forward and um starting to get that relationship established and 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 working this fall, um with first piloting this in Riverview Park um with uh Councilman Wilson's um support, um and then, you know, of course, seeing what that means uh in the future. So we're really excited about this development.
Yeah, I was just gonna highlight the Outdoor Inclusion um coalition that was formed to to make this happen and they're the ones that will that's what the um, sorry, I believe that's what the agreement will be with, right?
Yes, yeah, the Outdoor Inclusion Network has been an amazing partner in this. They actually represent a whole host of organizations locally and across the state that work in the outdoor space, um and so they have been um they're a a new uh newer entity in the city, uh this being one of the initial things that they've been really trying to establish and work towards is um figuring out what it means for our parks to be more inclusive overall, um and and like I said, they they build a coalition of organizations that we're all really familiar with that do this work um with uh with young people, with adults across the state, um to not just tackle issues around equity like access to camping, but to also tackle issues around how welcoming and how um inclusive our park spaces and outdoor recreation spaces are. Um so they've been a great partner, it's been um you know, we're excited uh to see this happen, and again, our first uh partnership here will be um directly impacting young people who are on the north side uh near Riverview Park, is a lot of key community stakeholders have also been a part of the conversation around what this looks like as it develops.
Yeah, I'm pumped about this. You have uh Friends River View Park been very, very supportive. Uh Parks Conservancy has been very supportive. I really appreciate your enthusiasm uh for this and all the work that you've done to get this to this point. And then also the, you know, I've had an opportunity to, you know, meet the Outdoor Inclusion Network and um you know, see them already volunteer in the park and see what they're already doing currently in the park, you know, some of those entities that make up that
Yeah.
that coalition. Uh yeah, I just wanna reiterate, it's a great opportunity for inner-city youth to have opportunities to camp in the parks, um and you know, I see, just like you said, it's only gonna you know, promote our parks and probably keep us in check to make sure that, you know, uh the parks are up to a certain standard as well, so. I think this is a a fabulous opportunity for our youth and I am I'm very excited uh that it will, you know, take place in the north in the north side, specifically in Riverview Park.
Yep, and I'll just also mention um that the Department of Public Works and the Department of Public Safety have both been great partners in this internally as well, um impacting both of those departments um to make sure that this happens, so there's a a lot of us um working to 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 try this out.
Great, great to hear. Thanks to everyone.
You, Councilman Warburg?
So, yeah, this is very exciting. I'm 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 glad to see this pilot moving forward and uh just to throw it out there, um a couple days ago, um I was in Hayes Woods to see, so Duquesne Light needed to um open up an access where they have to move a transmission tower, so um it 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 was a bit of a shock to see such a large, you know, this big road sort of cut out of the woods, but um walking uh walking down it, it really, it opened up this large meadow, which um I uh I think would be the perfect site for some type of like rustic cab, like for a group camping spot. Um and when I saw this, you know, come across the table, I was very excited because I definitely wanna talk, see how this pilot goes, right, but over the next year or two, I think that I'm I'm hoping anyway that 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 might be an opportunity start thinking about raising money to 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 create something like that, because it really is just the the perfect spot and now there's this nice access road to it, right, like they're, you know, so looking forward to that.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds interesting, especially since uh Hayes Woods, uh the intention has been to keep it as rustic as possible. Um so, yeah, you never know, that'd be something to explore for sure.
Thank you, Councilman Olden Strasburger?
Yeah, no, I'll just, uh more broadly, and this is an amazing opportunity and more broadly, I do think that outdoor um recreation is one of the sort of unsung or unspoken um uh drivers for, it can be for economic development, for attracting people to a city, and I'm really enthusiastic about, you know, from efforts like this, to make sure that it's fully inclusive to all residents, not just newcomers who, you know, already feel comfortable in our parks, um to the work that, say, Ventral Doors is doing to potentially move or hopefully move their kayaking to the convention center and give a whole bunch of people opportu- like that's gonna be an economic driver to climb P P G H, which wants to uh for climbing, you know, that doesn't involve a gym membership, like all these sorts of things that are, I think, trying to be as inclusive as possible. So many opportunities, I'm really enthusiastic and I wanna see more of this um throughout the city as a way to, you know, not just bring people back downtown, but bring people to Pittsburgh overall as visitors and as um as residents, so. Just wanted to state that. Thank you for your work on this and for everyone who's been, you know, uh vital in in making this happen.
Augur?
Yep. I I love the idea, I really do. Um and you said you have people to supply everything they need, tents?
Yes.
Things of that nature, yeah.
Yep, and that's part of the agreement, um and I also wanna shout out to Law Department, Kristen, who's been really helpful in crafting this, um to allow for that access of of that material to be used in the park, um in a way that, you know, of course, the city is able to be protected in that arrangement as well.
Right, and and what will you do? Reach out to schools and just let them know that this is available and?
Yeah, so we've been working with the Outdoor Inclusion Network, um since it's piloting in Riverview currently, we've been focused on the north side um and working with organizations that work with young people, um particularly through the summer, um because we wanted to we were hoping to get this a little sooner this summer established, um but we working with um organizations that work with young people um as our kind of primary group, um but schools have also been uh involved, um especially on the north side, our partnership with the Rangers. We have a footprint in all of the elementary schools and they've been part of um of developing the training and and trying to make sure we have interested partners uh who are signed up, so we we develop the training together, we're going to do the training first with stakeholders on the north side that we've been engaging, um and then as we roll this out as a pilot, we would broaden that um outreach for sure.
So we don't yet know the interest in the community as far as?
There is definitely interest. Um we definitely have um a number of or youth-serving organizations who have come to meetings regarding this um so that they kind of understood what the um what we would be looking for, so from the just being able to use the gear, understanding what that arrangement that they would have to have with you with um Outdoor Inclusion Network to do that, what we are hoping um to establish by way of the training uh requirement, and then, of course, for any agreement with the city, understanding that we need insurance, um clearances for any adults involved, all of that kind of stuff. So we've had those conversations with interested partners and we do have a number of.
Yeah, we have to really market it to the, to the kids, okay. I'm sure there will be a lot of interest, I I would think so.
Um I think I asked you this last year or two, but are we permitting campfires? So, um we have gotten approval under, just with the Rangers, uh guidance, um to use a solo stove for a camping fire uh like smores experience.
Yeah.
Um but that it's very regulated, so it would would not happen without the Rangers being there and being in charge of that engagement.
So the Ranger has to be there during the, now you said, what did you call that, a solo?
Uh it's a, it's like a solo stove, it's like a.
So it's gas?
No, it's it's a much safer way to have a a fire in a in a park area, it's like a newer, um it's not gas, but but essentially, the um the Rangers um have agreed to be a part of this by way of offering a um a night hike and smores kind of experience for about two hours of the of of the stay.
Yeah, well, that's what I was gonna say, you have to have, you know, kind of evening hours for some of the Rangers, right?
Yes.
And that's great.
So it would be, but their shift would be done before eleven.
And and the other thing was, is there any supervision? I mean, so a group of ten kids wanna camp out, is somebody?
Yes, so that that's part of the agreement, that it has to be um the partnership, the partner um like permit is with the organization, with the adult leaders, who we have their clearances and their insurance. They are, they've gone through the training and they are responsible for the young people that they are bringing, um who we also have um like um uh parent forms from.
Good, good, I look forward to, um good job, Bobby, I look forward to seeing how this turns out.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Warwood. We have one new paper, Bill 1919.
Bill 1919, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 484 of 2022, Further Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2021, authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, the Director of City Planning, and the Chief of Innovation and Performance, to enter into an amended professional service agreement or agreements with Building I, Inc., to purchase software and related support services that will create an interactive map for internal and public visual display of planning, permit, license, and violation data by increasing the approved amount by $79,600, for an amended total cost not to exceed $567,340 over eight years.
A motion to amend?
Motion to approve first.
Oh, motion to approve.
Second.
And now motion to amend?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I actually do have one question. Do you want to come up? I mean, I don't know if it would be PLI or IMP or both. You can go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Sure, I'm Shireen Adesey. I'm the Senior Manager of Applications with IMP.
David Green, Acting Director for the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections.
And Monica Bender, Assistant Director of Licensing and Administration.
Okay, great. So this is for, for basically an online portal that would allow the public to see where things are, right, with permits and licenses, et cetera, correct?
Right, so this, this tool actually exists. We've had it for roughly eight years, and we've been expanding on it for, for that duration of time. And ultimately, it provides the data accessible to the public as a self-service project, product. And they can run reports, review current events in permitting, enforcement, planning, and just, it meets the, the data accessibility and, and open data governance needs.
So just, so for example, if there is, you know, an abandoned, vacant or abandoned property next door to me that's, you know, causing issues, I can look into, into this and see when you last inspected, what the result was, that type of thing?
Yes, it would show whether we had an open enforcement case file and history related to that. It was relatively recently, I think maybe the last year or so. We are also including data related to outcomes for court hearings, so providing the public independent information so that they can follow whether or not the magistrate has made a determination of guilt or innocence, or whether it's been continued. So there's additional transparency and information available to the public so that they can follow independently things that are occurring on the code enforcement front.
Right, so that was what my, my question was gonna be. So with, with the information, because we get that a lot, where, you know, we're calling the magistrate to find out where it is with the magistrate, and it's just sort of like, it's not really, it would be nice if that was on there. And also, we let people know that, you know, if there's a hearing, you can go, right? You can go. So will all that be in there eventually, like the, the date of the, if there's a hearing upcoming, the date of the hearing and, and then later the results?
I, apologies, I'm not sure of the data that is currently exposed in terms of whether it's identifying the date of the hearing prior to the hearing occurring or not. I, we can follow up to verify that, but it is absolutely identifying that a, when a hearing has occurred, and then whether, what the outcome of that hearing was.
Does it identify when a hearing is pending, so when it's like no longer in your hands but waiting for a hearing?
It would identify that we've performed an investigation and that it has transferred to the court process. I'm just not entirely sure, I don't recall specifically if it is identifying a specific court hearing date in advance of that hearing or not.
Okay, I mean, again, if this is with, with the development, if, I mean, if that was, if it was possible to get that information, that would be great. But then also, if, in, short of that, you know, contact information for the court so that the property owner can call and find out, and maybe even just a, a pop-up or sidebar or something that explains that you, you can go to the court, you know, just because I think that that is really unclear for a lot of folks, that the difference between what PLI is doing and when it's with the courts, and, and I think PLI gets a lot of flack sometimes when in fact, the city has done what it can do, and we don't, the court process is not in our hands. And so to make that clear for the public. And that would certainly be easier for us, because then we can just say, oh, here's the, you know, people are like, this property is such and such, be like, oh, well, here's the link. And, you know, and if it hasn't been inspected in, you know, a number of years, or there hasn't been a recent complaint, then, then we know, okay, well, let's get something going. But, but they can see if there was one already logged recently. Okay, thank you. I don't know if there's any other questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Gross?
Hi, everybody. I, I have a longstanding data question, and I'm not sure if it's on this app or would be on a different one. And I have some, I was just searching to see my sent emails to our last Director, Kinter, about trying to figure out per year how many new dwelling units are permitted, like occupancy permits, because there's a general debate in the city about, you know, are we building enough housing, or where are we building housing, where are we not building housing? And there's been, like, on social media, people sharing just building permit data. So like, the 500 apartments where there was just a ribbon cutting on Liberty Avenue next to Iron City are listed as one permit, as if it was one, one dwelling or something. I'm like, you're using the wrong data. You know, the city really, truly hasn't actually, you know, you're trying to tell the public, they're sharing this information publicly. The city only has done like 200 permits in the last three years. So I'm like, oh, no, 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 it's way, it's thousands of new apartments or housing units that have been built. And so I emailed Director Kinter, I think it was earlier this year, and, and she, it wasn't as easy as I hoped. And I can't see the exact email. And these microphones are like right at like eye level. I can't see anyone's eyes. It's the most curious thing. It's like we're hiding behind them. So, can you, where is that data?
So...
And is it, will it be publicly facing like this one? And that would be really great if it were.
The information that I think you're referring to in terms of new construction dwelling units?
Yeah, be like new construction, like, okay, so like last year, you know, are we on pace this year compared to 2022 or 2018? And how many, you know, actual units have been built of, of housing?
We are legally required to track that, and we have that data within our system. And I believe we publish it to the data warehouse on a...
I guess there must be just a lag then or something. Like, I couldn't really get...
And, and to be clear, if that reporting requirement is specific to new construction, so it wouldn't include a...
Like house flips or something?
Yeah, or a change in use. So if it was an existing building, so...
Can we add it though, if we want?
We...
Because you're like, I, I just keep thinking, you're, you, at the end, let's say a warehouse. There's, there's a lot of examples of this farther up Liberty Avenue, like just around the corner from the other one. It's like, it used to be the plant warehouse, and now it's like 20 expensive condominiums. You, you've got it. You know how many units they were putting in, and you've inspected those units before they're able to be occupied. So...
So I, I don't want to say it's impossible. There are some concerns. We would need to segregate the data between the new construction, which we are legally required to record and ensure that we have integrity of that data and it's accurate versus tracking...
Total units.
Yeah, conversions, change in use, which we are not required to. So we are not currently proactively tracking.
Oh, I think we need to.
Yeah, and I think that is something we can look at doing, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be necessarily a gargantuan task to do so, but it, it would take some time to reconfigure our one-stop system.
Who does that?
Who does?
Yeah, who would reconfigure the one-stop system? And, and like, is it you all? Do you hire out? Like, how does that happen?
So there's a mix. We have professional services with the developer, software developer, who performs some of those improvements. And then we also do a fair amount of improvements in-house, various individuals within the agencies involved. So PLI has staff who help to configure. There's also staff in DOMI and City Planning, and then I believe some staff in IMP who also help. So it depends on the nature and complexity of the, the improvement or enhancement. And we try to be selective and tackle those things that we can do.
This is, I'm gonna, I'm saying for me, I think this is really important. We've just passed legislation promoting conversions of office towers, for example, downtown, right? Those would be invisible to our total counts of occupancy permits. Right? So we're, you know, we're about to have probably more across the, across the city, across the country. Grade A, you know, offices are really vacant and trading hands, and the, the big potential here is for us to convert those into living units. So we don't want to not get credit, like cannot let the public know that we're creating housing units in our reporting. And we're, we're currently under-reporting the amount of dwelling units, maybe by zero, but maybe by one or two, or maybe by a lot. We don't know, because we don't have the data in front of us. Yeah, and it's, and it's a priority of the administration, and it's a priority of council to, to do this conversion. So let's make sure that we can capture that information. Yeah. So if, if you need anything from us, let us know.
Sure. We'll, we'll go back to our team and evaluate possibilities. And it's not something that is on the super complex end of the spectrum, but it, it does have implications. So we need to evaluate how, how best to approach it and implement it.
Right, and, and especially since you're about to bring online because of the legislation we just voted on earlier, probably, you know, possibly a lot of occupancy permits with, like, counts of units that wouldn't be new construction. So good, good timing. Glad I asked. All right, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Gross, one fur paper, Bill 1841.
Bill 1841, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Enter Municipal Transfer of a Liquor License from Mac and Toes, Inc., Located at 335 East Main Street, Carnegie, PA, to the Applicant Ambloid Restaurants of Pittsburgh, LLC, Doing Businesses Ambloid Eatery, Located at 400 East Ohio Street, Pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our new papers, Bill 1911.
Bill 1911, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 3127 Liberty Avenue at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1913.
Bill 1912, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 305 Wood Street at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Now, Bill 1913.
Bill 1913, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 5527th Street at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. We have exhausted our agenda. Our meeting announcements are as follows. This afternoon, council will hold a briefing on the August 23 Garfield, Garfield standoff shooting and the August 25 Smithfield incident, with the first session beginning at 1:00 PM and the second, second session beginning at 2:00 PM. Next week, council will hold its regular meeting on Tuesdays, September 26 at 10:00 AM, and a standing committee meeting on Wednesdays, September 17 at 10:00 AM. Speaker Registration will close at 9:00 AM, the day of the meeting. Also, on September 26, council will hold a briefing for members to discuss updating PLI's International Property Maintenance Code, in the first session beginning at 1:30 and the second session beginning at 2:00. And on Wednesday, September 27, at 1:30 PM, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda to discuss the state of childcare and childcare funding programs in Pittsburgh. Anything else for members? If not, need a motion to excuse absent member, no, Bruce and Burge were both on. So just, Teresa wasn't there. Motion to excuse absent member, approve minutes in adjourned meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.